Welcome back and good afternoon colleagues. I'm Nina Trentesia, Tynelle Hesutun Gwahan is back in session from recess. And we are now on item 18, the consideration of the daily file. We'll begin with the third reading file. We'll begin with our first item under third reading is bill number 54-37COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 54-37COR, as amended by the Committee on Fire, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities, Public Transit, Unemployment Insurance and Universal Health Insurance, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by William A. Parkinson, Joanne Brown, Duane T. D. Siniklis. An act to amend section 63102, 63103, 63104, 63105, 63106, 63107, 63108, 63109, 63110, 63113, 63116.2, 63119, 63125, 63129, 63130, 63131, 63132, and 63133. Of Article 1, Chapter 63, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to game and fish regulations protecting our marine preserves, standardizing penalties for violations of game and fish statutes and adjudication process thereof.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye.
Bill number 54-37COR received 15 ayes and bill number 54-37COR duly passed by this Bill number 113-37LS, clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 113-37LS, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Chris Barnett, Therese M. Terlahi, Sabina Flores-Perez, Teloty Taidegui, Joe S. San Augustine, Frank Blas Jr., Joanne Brown, Christopher M. Duñez, Thomas J. Fisher, Jesse A. Luhon, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, William A. Parkinson, Roy A. B. Canata, Duane T. D. Siniklis, Amanda L. Shelton. An act to amend section 3103P of Article 1, Chapter 3, Title 17, Guam Code Annotated, relative to restoring the Guam Department of Education Management Audit Requirements.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, nay. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye.
Bill number 113-37LS received 14 ayes and one nay. Bill number 113-37LS duly passed by this body. Bill number 29-37COR, clerks, please read the title.
Resolution number 29-37COR, introduced by Jesse A. Luhon, Frank Blas Jr., Teloty Taidegui, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Christopher M. Duñez, William A. Parkinson, Joanne Brown, Duane T. D. Siniklis, Roy A. B. Canata, Sabina Flores-Perez. Relative to requesting for the U.S. Congress to appropriate monies for Guam non-military residents who were exposed to Agent Orange and who are suffering from alignments caused by exposure to Agent Orange.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye.
Resolution number 29-37COR received 15 ayes and is duly adopted by this body. Bill number 173-37COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 173-37COR, as amended in the Committee of the Whole. Introduced by Therese M. Terlahi, Teloty Taidegui, Chris Barnett, Joe S. San Augustine, Sabina Flores-Perez, Duane T. D. Siniklis, Amanda L. Shelton, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Frank Blas Jr., Joanne Brown, Christopher M. Duñez, Thomas J. Fisher, Jesse A. Luhon, William A. Parkinson, Roy A. B. Canata. An act to appropriate $15,828,000 from the General Fund to the Guam Power Authority for a three-month extension to the Programmen Azuda Pada Ita Tauta Energy Credit Program relative to providing customers with $300 credit toward their account.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, nay. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, nay. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, nay. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, nay. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, pass. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, nay. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye.
Senator Canata, aye. Bill number 173-37COR received nine ayes and six nays. Bill number 173-37COR is duly passed by this body. Bill number 97-37COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 97-37COR, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Roy A. B. Canata, Teloty Taidegui, Jesse A. Luhon, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Amanda L. Shelton, Joe S. San Augustine, William A. Parkinson, Duane T. D. Siniklis, Thomas J. Fisher, Sabina Flores-Perez, Chris Barnett, Frank Blas Jr., Therese M. Terlahi, Joanne Brown, Christopher M. Duñez. An act to transfer law number 106-1, Block 12, in the municipality of Inalahan, formerly known as the Inalahan Baptist Church, to the Guam Preservation Trust.
In consultation with Legislative Council, the title may not exactly match the bill as the bill was amended. And, for example, the word "transfer." So, is there a motion to allow legal to make those technical changes? And just to give you a heads-up that that might change after vote?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Please make, I would ask if legal can make those technical corrections. That's all.
Sisus Massey, Senator Canata, on that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Pardon? Yes. Yes. Thank you.
For the record, now we're standing House rules and to make sure that we're in line, I allow legal to make technical corrections. So I make a motion for legal to make technical corrections.
All right. On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Sisus Massey. So, the clerks read the title, will now do roll call on the bill.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye.
Bill number 97-37COR received 15 ayes and is duly passed by this body. We are now on bill number 9-37COR, as substituted and amended on the floor. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 9-37COR, as substituted and amended on the floor. Introduced by Duane T. D. Siniklis, Joe S. San Augustine, Roy A. B. Canata, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, William A. Parkinson, Therese M. Terlahi, Jesse A. Luhon, Thomas J. Fisher. An act to amend sections 58109 and 58110 of Chapter 58, and add a new Chapter 58B to Division 3 of Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the legalization and regulation of the use of consumer-grade fireworks.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, nay. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, nay. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, nay. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, nay.
Bill number 9-37COR received nine ayes and six nays. Bill number 9-37COR is duly passed by this body. Bill number 90-37COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 90-37COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriations, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Roy A. B. Canata, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Joe S. San Augustine, Duane T. D. Siniklis, Thomas J. Fisher, Amanda L. Shelton, Jesse A. Luhon, William A. Parkinson. An act to add a new Article 4 to Chapter 18 of Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to mandating electronic reporting for all government of Guam entities.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye.
Bill number 90-37COR received 15 ayes and is duly passed by this body. We've concluded with the third reading file. We are now on the voting file. On the nomination of, sorry, is everybody ready? On the nomination of Doreen T. Crissostamo Munya, Ph.D., to serve as a member of the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. Doreen T. Crissostamo Munya, Ph.D., received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Margarita Felicitas B. Angel, to serve as a member, retired teacher, school administrator of GDOE, representative of the Guam Education Board. All in favor, please raise your hand. Margarita Felicitas B. Angel received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Joanna T. Chun, to serve as a member of the University of Guam Board of Regents. All in favor, please raise your hand. Joanna T. Chun received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Jesse G. Garcia, to serve as a member of the ABWANPET International Airport Authority Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. Jesse G. Garcia received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Luline C. San Augustine, to serve as a member, guidance counselor, representative of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification. All in favor, please raise your hand. Luline C. San Augustine received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Rosanna D. San Miguel Tiston, to serve as a member, general public representative of the Guam Academy Charter Schools Council. All in favor, please raise your hand. Rosanna D. San Miguel Tiston received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Alexander D. Wylard, M.D., to serve as a member, physician representative of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. All in favor, please raise your hand. Alexander D. Wylard, M.D., received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Rolando Z. Cepeda, to serve as a member, visual arts representative of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Council or CAHA, Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. Rolando Z. Cepeda received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Dorothy Perez-Harris, to serve as a member of the Port Authority of Guam Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. Dorothy Perez-Harris received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. of Guam Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right. We're on the nomination of Monique R.C. Story, Ph.D., to serve as a member of the Guam Public Library System Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. Monique R.C. Story, Ph.D., received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Nicole B. Nelson, to serve as a member, information technology representative of the Guam Public Library System Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. Nicole B. Nelson received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Nolan G.T. Flores, to serve as a member, general public representative of the Guam Public Library System Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. Nolan G.T. Flores received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. We've concluded our voting file. We're now on brief extension of remarks. The floor is open. If there's anyone who'd like to be recognized. Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
Today is a significant day for the people of Guam and our cherished natural environment. With the passage of bill 54-37, we have taken a resolute step forward, ensuring the protection and conservation of our marine preserves, coral, and terrestrial animals. of our marine preserves, coral, and terrestrial animals. Our actions today reflect our unwavering commitment to Ireland's environment, biodiversity, and its vital ecosystems. I would be remiss if I did not express my deep gratitude to my fellow senators. In the drafting and refinement of Bill 54-37, your unwavering commitment, constructive feedback, and collegiality have been nothing short of exceptional. We have not only worked together in the spirit of bipartisanship, but have strengthened this bill, ensuring it is robust and effective for the betterment of our environmental regulation. As we move forward, let us always remember the importance of these collective efforts and the positive change we can affect when we work together. This is not only a win for the environment, but a testament to what can be achieved when we act in unity for the greater good of Guam and its people. I remember remarking to my staff after our discussion on this bill that this was the kindest debate I had seen in the Guam Legislature. We really came together to make this bill better and do the right thing. With that kind of start to session, I really did not see the events of the last few days of session coming. Was this the same legislature that had the discussions on Bill 54-37? I sensed no ego, no political backbiting, no grandstanding. It was just doing the work and moving forward with positive changes for Guam. I hope as we move forward in this legislature, I hope we can have more discussions that were like 54-37. Closing, I want to ask that we all pray for peace in the Middle East and the Guam Legislature too. With that, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Senator Parkinson. On brief extension of remarks, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? Senator Titegui, you are recognized.
At this point, Madam Speaker, I'm sure I must be blue in the face after all the debate back and forth and trying to get a point across to this body that passed Bill 9 unanimously. You know, Madam Speaker, as it stands, is the most senseless, unsafe piece of legislation we've entertained this term. The vote against safety amendment is a slap in the face to the people of Guam and a direct, bold-faced lie from those who say they prioritize public safety. I stood up and fought for this bill to have amendments that would protect our island, our beautiful island, and her people. What kept me going were the phone calls, the text messages, the emails from everyone, not just certain people, everyone. Firemen, nurses, people I'd just see on the street when I'm having lunch, people calling my cell saying, "Don't give up the fight. Keep fighting for our people." It is a sad, sad day today. There is no reason for any of us to vote yes on Bill 9. None. To have fun? Like I said, Chuck E. Cheese is for fun. In this body, it's serious business. It's about protecting our people. It's obvious that nobody seems to care. At least nine people don't seem to care. This is so sad. Yes, go home. Sleep at night if you can. If you can. Get those rosaries out, light those candles. Pray to God that nobody gets hurt or loses a house, loses a limb, or God forbid, loses a life. Because this body here did not put any safety mechanisms in there at all. And I'm pretty sure the mayors are livid at this point because they're the ones on the front line. Shame on everyone here. I'm so disgusted right now. You are putting our firemen in danger. You're putting our children in danger because you refused amendments to make it safer. You refused. I'm gonna keep fighting. Introduce legislation to appeal this law. After you hear from our constituents, after everyone who voted for this bill hears from our constituents, what a big mistake you made. I didn't vote you to be a senator to make laws like this that would hurt our community and our people. I didn't vote for you to do that. And makes me wonder, do you think anyone who voted for Bill 9 is gonna care what the people say? You really think they're gonna care? Well, when you see those nine people, make sure you go up to them and tell them exactly how you feel. Hopefully then, they'll vote on a bill that repeals Bill 9. It was a disingenuous, unbelievable bill, and you should be ashamed of yourself. Thank you to those who voted against this bill. Senator Perez, Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Joanne Brown, Speaker Therese Terlahi, and myself voted against this bill because we believe in the safety and well-being of our island. Also Senator Frank Bloss, who I'm known, firemen always go up to him and thank him for remembering them and keeping them safe from harm as much as possible. Thank you, Minority Leader. And all those names that I mentioned, please, to the public. Those are your heroes. Those who stood up for the betterment of our island and her people. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On brief extension of remarks, is there any other senator who would like to be recognized? Vice Speaker?
Speaker Therese Terlahi, you're recognized on the extension of remarks.
Sutsuus masi. And again, thank you to my colleagues for the passage of the Energy Credit Bill for the people of Guam and for recognizing the need that they have. And I'm very grateful. I'm sure the people are very grateful. It's the end of October, so this credit might not go into place for October, but I'm hoping GPA will be able to work it out as soon as possible if the governor signs the bill. I just wanted to say a few words under extension of remarks, and I know my time is very limited, but I just wanted to point out an observation. It's a sad one. You know, I believed that when we were elected, we were elected not necessarily to come in here with our preconceived notions and insist that those were correct. I really, although they reviewed all our records and our experience, and I am sure voted because of your experience and our experience and wanted that to be part of the discussion, they also voted that who they thought would listen. Listen to them, to the people. Listen to each other. Listen to all the agencies, the experts. And then debate. And debate is very important for this process. Our job is to make policy. It's not to go hammer down the nails. It's to make the policy. And in order to make better policy, that's where this system of debate came in. It's throw all the ideas on, make them better. Make them better with a debate. Show different perspectives. Perspectives are important. And I have been convinced on this floor numerous times by the different perspectives that I have heard that I would not have known on my limited knowledge. So I think to make the policy better, debate is good. It's essential. It's critical. It's part of the process that the United States founders created when they created this type of a democracy. I think for me on Guam, one of the more important parts of debate is that when we have very controversial issues, I think the people of Guam are absolutely fully entitled to hear every point of view so that they can understand how we came to the conclusion that we did. So that our records will show for future generations why we decided certain things. Why we wanted to make a range of 50 to 1,000, you know, feet from the explosion of fireworks. It's going to show what we knew at the time. And I think that's important also for future generations to know when they're debating policy. That they can easily say, "Well, they knew this at the time, and that's why they did that." It's going to be important for courts to know what we intended at the time when our words are not perfect. And so it's been during this term, the 37th Guam Legislature, that we have used this motion for the previous question. We've used it at least three times, maybe more. One was on a bill discussing the burning and open detonation to cut off the debate. One was on a bill authorizing whether public schools can open without an inspection. Cut off the debate. And again, we all seen on the fireworks bill. We might have done it in the budget, but I can't remember very clearly. I think we did. And that's a budget. Some people say that's our sole job, is to pass a budget. But you know, I... My memory's not perfect, but I've served as counsel for the Guam Legislature for at least 25 years in either the majority or the minority. And I never remember them cutting off debate. In fact, one of my best memories of the Guam Legislature in those days was their debate. I loved it. I loved to see the twists that someone puts a new idea on, and I never thought of that. And you can see all around the room, that's another thing to add, or that's another idea that they didn't think of, or another way to make the bill better. And that's how I knew that we had some fantastic, awesome orators. And I saw it firsthand, and I didn't grow up... I grew up in... I don't know, but that cemented for me that the Timoros are awesome orators. That's our legacy. Not mine. I am not an orator. But boy, were they. And they were never afraid to debate. I remember some of those debates were so hard, emotional. In my mind, Ted Nelson is a legend because Ted Nelson, when it came to "We need to stand up for the people," he would stand up and he could go on for a day. No one dared to interrupt him or tell him he had to stop. I remember in those days seeing firsthand what's a filibuster because they were allowed to speak for long periods of time when they were stuck on a decision and they needed more time. I mean, I don't know why they did it. I can't read their minds, but I could see what that word meant firsthand. But I never saw a negative to the debate. Always a positive, always a... You know, a Mark Forbes idea. Joanne Brown, she was so young. She was a debater. Ben Pangolinen. You know, sometimes you could see the emotion in what they're saying, and you might not agree with it. But you could also see their wisdom and their care. And I think we should put that on full display when we have very controversial issues. I also think we are here to vote on behalf of the people of Guam that are not voting on whether to pass one bill or not. They're relying on us to fully educate ourselves before we vote. They're relying on us to do what is right. And how can we know what is right if we cannot debate the bills? So I'm just going to put that on the record. I would like to see more debate, not less, in this body. I think that is critical for the people of Guam to come along with us and understand why we are doing what we are doing and who we are doing it for. And on that note, I have two bills I want to particularly talk about. One is the fireworks bill. I didn't get a chance to debate on that bill, but I had informed the sponsor prior to the bill even being put on the session agenda that although my name was on the bill as a sponsor, I had changed my mind later on and informed him that I was going to remove my name as a sponsor. I was not allowed to make that motion on the floor because debate was cut off. But I put my name on that bill because I agreed with the intent of the sponsor that was expressed to me at the time that if fireworks on New Year's would decrease the use of firearms on New Year's, I'm all for it. That's what I wanted to see. I did not see that type of testimony in the public hearing or in the testimony that came in. And so I'm not convinced that we're going to be replacing firearms with fireworks. It looks like we're just going to be adding fireworks to firearms. That's what I can tell at this point. And the other thing, of course, is that many agencies did come in and tell us the harms and people with their personal experiences. But more critical to me was these agencies coming in and telling us this will cause harm unless we can mitigate it. We cannot mitigate it without extensive regulations, which are not in this bill. We cannot mitigate it without extensive resources. So when the fire department came in and said they So when the fire department came in and said they didn't take a position, that's their formal reply. But if you read what they said in detail, it says they needed regulations, many of them. They needed resources, many of them. And that there was no way that if we added this burden to them that they would be able to take care of it with the current situation. And so I feel for, for those protectors of ours and our community who we are placing a huge, a bigger burden on if we cannot take care of them as well. That was the fire department, the Department of Agriculture firefighters. They said there were seven, I think, of them. That's all. And they talked about the risk across our island from fires in the forests. The Guam EPA and mayors. So I just wanted to explain my vote on that bill. And again, to thank my colleagues for their recognition as well that when it comes to things like funding sources or, or the fiscal reports of, of the administration, we are the third branch of government. We need to be able to do what they put us in here, and that's checks and balances. And that includes information. And that includes ideas. That includes fleshing out whether we have enough funds or we don't have enough funds for certain projects or fleshing out what the priorities that we are going to hold since we are the policymakers versus allowing, sitting back and allowing the expenditures on lesser priority items. The Energy Credit Bill is going to give only three months of relief this time, not the five months like the last time. And I know this is going to be very hard for the people when it ends. But I'm praying that we're going to find additional ways to provide relief. I'm still convinced that our community is in need of this relief, and they are in need of any type of relief that we can grant them. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Sisus Massey to my colleagues.
Thank you, Speaker Therese. Senator Tom Fisher on the extension of remarks.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I would remind the previous speaker that the legislature is the first branch of government. We are not the third branch of government. Merely look at your constitution, ma'am. We have heard an argument that I would characterize as an attempt to divert the actual problems, our attention from the actual problems which occurred in the course of this session. They were unfortunate. It had nothing to do with cutting off debate. That is verbal leisure demand. It was an attempt to trick us. It had nothing to do with cutting off debate. The unfortunate friction that arose in this particular session, which I hope we will not see again, arose as a result of the Speaker of the 37th Guam Legislature's consistent refusal to follow the rules that we have created and adopted, including Mason's manual. The Speaker breaks faith with every member of this body. She sits, any Speaker, he or she, sits in the chair as a result of an expression of faith in his or her ability to lead. I would put to the body that we have seen a failure in that leadership. The time perhaps is not yet ripe to address that. But for any Speaker or any leader, to break faith with the members of the body is to invite vacation of that chair. As we go forward, follow the rules. Keep faith with us. If you do so, ma'am, if you keep faith with us, I promise you, we will keep faith with you. It's entirely up to you. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Senator Fisher. On brief extension of remarks, Senator Shelton? On brief extension of remarks, no. Pardon? Is there a motion? No. I'm on brief extension of remarks. Senators Nicholas here recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Earlier this year, we went up to Saipan. And my team and I, over the weekend, we walked into stores. You go and get them quite easily, you know. And we visited some of the warehouse, the warehouse where they stored them. We spoke to their legislators. We spoke to their leaders. And it was very positive. They, they were kind of happy that I was introducing this bill. And, and so, and so was I. So we, we went and we purchased some fireworks. And everybody was so excited when we were purchasing fireworks, and they were asking us, "Where were we gonna let them off?" And we said, "We're gonna go down to the beach." And it just so happened that the House of Representatives, the Speaker, Representative LaGomis, I asked him, I said, "You know, I was a little scared because I haven't played with fireworks for a while. Can you be the one to light it up and show me how?" That's, I think that's how we all are here because, you know, fireworks is illegal here. But it's gonna take some time to get to know it. So he eventually pulled one out and popped it, and we all sat around and we, we laughed, and we were amazed at how easy and how simply you can do that in Saipan. And it was, it was the Speaker of the House of Representatives that actually blew out our first fireworks. And so I asked him, I said, "How, how did you guys deal with this over the years?" He says, "You know, we had to make modifications through the years regarding our fireworks, but we never made it illegal." So they modified it, and they modified it. And one of the modifications was how were they gonna store it? How they were gonna transfer it from the port to, to, to storage? And all that stuff, all that stuff I'm taking into consideration. And, but I would like to thank my colleagues, and I'm probably running out of time here. I'd like to thank Senator Fisher for being principled and, and not caring for, you know, his skin. He just wants to do the right thing. Senator Chris Duennas for giving me the extra nudge to, to continue with the pushing forward with this bill. He's a man of his word. He's a good person. Senator Frank Blos, although he didn't vote for it, hafat tau tautzu. And that's what we're missing here sometimes. That the, timatungu, hafam hafat tau ta. Lo, Senator Frank Blos, although you didn't vote for my, for my bill, hun fat tau tautzu. And that's one of the most important things. Also, we noticed Senator, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes for standing up for parliamentary procedure, which was unbelievable. And I've, I've never witnessed such strength and standing up for what is right and trying to keep with parliamentary procedures so, so that we maintain fairness in this body. And for keeping all the humor and all the laughter over there, Senator Jesse Luhon. He's always pushing me along and encouraging me to do the things that we do. And I'd like to thank you, sir, for that. And all my other colleagues, Senator Amanda, Senator Roy, and Senator Joseph Augustine for helping me along. And Senator Parkinson, where you at? But, so the, the bill has passed our body. And I've, I now rest easy because at least now I have kept my promise to the people. And should it go to the governor, and whatever she does with it, I will honor it. And I'll be very grateful for the opportunity as it stands, passed or fell, vetoed or not. I'm very thankful that I was given the opportunity to, to see it through. What we need to remember here is that we have rules to follow. And I think it would be best off if we all respect each other and focus on the merits of the bill and not drag each other through the mud and maintain property quorum and commensurate to the seat that we sit in. I think respect is, is in order. And when you're not allowed to do that, everything seems to fall apart. And it's very disparaging and discouraging and disheartening and disingenuous when at the 11th hour you choose to grandstand and put in all these bills that even if you put them in, you were never gonna vote for it anyway. So why even proffer these amendments? But I'm very grateful and I'm thankful for the people of Guam for actually seeing me through and getting this through. And I, I pray that you all, should this bill become law, you know, play safely, mind safety procedures, and, and do the right thing. Because the guys up in the north of us, those guys up in Saipan, they seem to get it together. Only on Guam, we think of our people that they cannot handle fireworks, only on Guam. So, but in the Cenamai, they go ahead and let them play with it anyway. But I'm very thankful for the, for the people for allowing me this opportunity. And I'm very grateful for our very principled people here who stood up and fought for what is right. And I'm very thankful for being allowed, at least to keep my promise. Because I've always felt that the happiest places is where, where you can find trust. And I'm very thankful for allowing, being able to keep my promise because that is the foundation of trust. And again, should this bill become law, please, everybody, use it safely. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On brief extension of remarks, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? If not, then Majority Leader, Senator Shelton, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to adjourn today's session, subject to the call of the Speaker.
On that motion to adjourn, subject to the call of the Speaker, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we are hereby adjourned, subject to the call of the Speaker. Sisus Massey, colleagues.